We need to broadcast. Okay, calling to order, the Needham Select Board meeting for June 28th. So thank you everybody. I want to make a brief comment. I've been asked about a couple of things. I had been asked if the board would make a resolution about something. We've had, of course, all kinds of announcements from the Supreme Court over the last week. Here's what I'm going to say. We're not making a resolution. But the town of Needham is no place for hate. We don't believe in hating people for any reason. For religion, for race, for who they love. That's not what we're about. So I'm just going to leave it at that. We have done resolutions in the past for things that have directly impacted our community. Arson at the Chabad house, for shootings that have happened in the nation. But this was not one of those situations. So I just wanted to say that for everybody and say, it's been a tough couple of weeks. All right. So the first item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the trustees of Needham Free Public Library. If we could ask you to join us. And I don't know if we, is our candidate actually here tonight? Maybe if you all want to introduce yourselves for a second, since you're not usually at our meetings and maybe the regular watchers of our meetings are not here. At the same time, so let's start for a second. I don't know who's gonna.
Oh, just since I'm KK Hill, I'm the current chair of the library board.
Carol Thomas.
Tom Hackett.
And Rob Headet.
Terrific. Thank you all for coming this evening. So there is a joint appointment in place to fill sadly the vacancy of Rick Hardy, who served the town so well for so many years on many places, not just on the library trustees. And I know that you all have participated in an interview or a number of you have with Marcus. And there's a recommendation this evening. So would you like to bring that recommendation forward?
Yes. So we met last week. Marcus joined us with the library board to review five applicants to fill the vacancy created by Rick Hardy. And we want to acknowledge Rick's contribution to Needham over many years. Tonight, we are recommending resident, Needham resident Erhart Graef to fill vacancy on the Needham Library Board with the term expiring April 2023. This is, Erhart is sitting back there with his wife Kate. Erhart's a professor at Owen College of Engineering and a father of two preschool children. He has a passion for the role of public libraries and has served on a task force for future libraries while at MIT. He has spoken internationally about public libraries as centers of civic innovation and even worked in the acquisitions department of his own library while attending college. We interviewed five candidates and found that while each one would bring excellence and enthusiasm to the board, Erhart was a true standout in both experience and vision for the role of public libraries. We are very excited to recommend Erhart Graef as our newest member of the Needham Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. And I'm looking, we do have a couple of folks who were online on Zoom, so I failed to introduce them. I see some waves. Our two other trustees. Your two other trustees.
Hannah Harrow Hooker.
And Jay.
Hello, everyone.
Great, thank you.
Hello.
Um, so I would just ask if there's any further discussion or Marcus, if you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say how the process went. I feel like we had some really, really strong candidates in this pool in this selection process. The interviews went really well. And were answered with a lot of, I would say, a lot of thought and, and a lot of passion. And I think going with Erhart makes so much sense for our board and the trustees and the future of the library with his input and how he's going to collaborate with all of the people we already have as the trustees. I was pleasantly, I don't even know how to put into words. I was like, once Erhart started talking, I think just learning how much this means to him and the history of Needham and going back in his service to others and what the library means to him and his family. It was just truly a pleasure kind of getting to know him through that process. And it's going to be fun working with him over the next couple of years, well, until 2023 and hopefully further. So thank you so much for letting me be a part of the process.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Could we invite Mr. Graef up just here, his interest in the position? And thank you. So welcome. I just wanted to hear from you directly. Definitely have everything going for you, Mr. Nelson. Those glowing reports. So just wanted to hear why you're interested in the position and what you'll bring to the library trustees. And thank you for applying.
So I'm very excited to be nominated to join the Board of Trustees of the library. Libraries have some, have been something that's been really important to me all through my life. As was said, I worked in the acquisitions department when I was an undergrad and kind of first got that taste of being on the side of really making a library a kind of community and a set of resources that people could rely on. But I remember as a kid kind of going to that public library in the, in the area where I grew up. I mean, that being an important part of my life. And that's something that we've made central to our experience with our kids here in Needham. So I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old, and we go to the library very regularly. And, and it's just been wonderful to kind of use that as a resource. And when I saw that the, that the position had opened up sadly because of loss of our former trustee, it seemed like a perfect fit for the public service that I had been excited to pursue for a long time. So I've, I've, I've worked in, in politics and public service in the past. And one of the things that, you know, gave me some confidence that I could help here on the, on the Board of Trustees for the library. I worked for the Obama Foundation as a consultant during its early first year and thought about their programming challenges. Thought about how research, especially around how do you encourage civic engagement and bring together a kind of complex tapestry of stakeholders in order to do some really interesting work at the intersection of engagement and education with young people. So that felt like something I could bring as an experience in helping them create a strategy around that. Second, you know, I worked as a trustee for a philanthropy that I started with some friends of mine called the Awesome Foundation here in the Boston area, where for 10 years I worked with them to give $1,000 grants every month to interesting creative projects around the Boston area. And so through that effort, I really saw kind of, you know, what was interesting about providing resources to do great work that would bring people together in the communities around Boston. And so I was excited to think about how I could play a role in bringing resources to bear to make sure that programming and interesting opportunities for everybody in Needham could happen through the libraries.
That's great. Well, thank you. As you know, the library is the cornerstone of this community and wish you all the best of luck once you receive the positive vote. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
My procedural one. When will he be sworn in?
Well, that's a good question. I had actually some procedural questions before we even get to that one. So we are having. Okay. And then he would be available for your next meeting. I am curious about the vote, Kate, which is we are a board that's in session. Does the library board need to go into session? And then do we need to do a roll call vote since we have some people who are remote?
You would need a roll call vote, yes. It's been noted as a delay, so I have to find ways without having to have them seated on.
Okay. All right. So it's fine that we're in session.
I believe they are too.
Oh, you're in session. Awesome. Okay. So then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board and Board of Trustees of the Needham Free Public Library vote to appoint Erhart Graef to the Trustees of the Needham Free Public Library until the next town election to be held on April 11th, 2023.
A second.
Any further discussion? All right. I will ask for a roll call vote. Heidi? Marcus?
Yes.
Kevin?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Tom?
Kay?
Carol.
Carol?
Hi.
Then we have Anna?
I.
And Jay?
I.
I believe that's everyone and it's unanimous. Oh, I'll vote. I absolutely welcome. And we look forward to your service on the library board. Is there another thing that we all need to sign?
Yeah, Miles is going to get it.
All right. So nobody leave yet, right? Just if you want to step back a second, but we will get it signed so that you can get sworn in this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'll see you later. Till next time.
I'd like to invite the chief up.
I assume our signatures are not necessary and we should leave?
You are all set. Thank you, Jay, for checking in and Anna.
Thank you, everybody.
We have enough signatures to make it happen.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hello there. It's getting to be like a momentous occasion. Are you feeling like that?
I'm feeling very strange.
You're feeling very strange.
Good strange.
Good strange. Well, I was going to say, we're going to miss you.
I will miss everybody.
So the chief is here tonight. He is retiring. And he apparently is going to go through with this. There are a few last moments he still has where he could decide something different, but I think we're running out of time.
We are running out of time, but can we send that application at any given moment?
And we are going to have more festivities before you're officially officially gone with the public safety building, official opening occurring beforehand. I do just want to say that when we had the new chief come to meet us, I asked him about his videotaping skills. Apparently he hadn't been asked about that, but I am grateful for mainly your fire skills and for your leadership of your, your guys, men and women. But, but also for the way that you really adapted and figured out what was needed to make the case when we needed a new building. And you were such a key part of helping to make that happen, to set us forward for the future. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to open up for any other comments for anybody who would like to say anything. And then I'm going to let the chief comment.
That sounds good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dennis, thank you for all of your service. You know, looking at you here, just realizing what a solid leader you've been for the department, for the town, always someone that you can come to. And I thought today, you know, it's not just the firefighting and everything else, which is so important, but it's all the approvals that you do for the town buildings and making sure they're safe for everyone else who lives in this community. And just know that you're always a phone call away for all of us and anyone in town who needed you. And you're going to be incredibly missed, but I know that as we had new recruits come in here, you've really built up the department to a quality department and something that holds this department up to any other one in the Commonwealth and would be ahead of them. So thank you for all of your, your hard work.
And I want to echo that, Chief. I know we haven't known each other that long, but I think your presence is going to be felt here for a long time and appreciate what you've done for our town and our community and keeping us safe and, you know, instructing and, you know, I would say onboarding the next generation of firefighters that are going to continue on your legacy. So appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you as well. You and I just met.
Yes.
But I think one of the things that's critical to having a good community is a feeling of safety and just knowing that when something terrible happens, you're going to have someone to call. It's happened at my house a couple of times and your guys have been fantastic. And knowing, knowing that you're there to help, it enables everyone to move forward with all of their projects and all of their lives. That's a, it's a big responsibility and I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to say, my first career choice was the firefighter.
It wasn't mine.
I was five at the time. And had I not been terrified of the trucks and stuck with it, I would have worked with you.
You could throw a better fastball, mine wouldn't.
You too. But thank you for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Kate? Thank you, Marion. So Dennis and I have worked together for 32 of his 36 years. We spent a lot of time sitting on the opposite side of the table. I think by my calculation, maybe eight contracts we settled together.
Probably.
It was such a joy for me to recommend him to you, to promote to chief and have him come to the bargaining table on the other side. And it's like, okay, now, now tell us what we should be doing right here. Dennis and I go back really far. Between us, we have five girls, all raised in the same town. We've, we followed them from very young, being in place together, all just serving together. You know, through, through their colleges and getting married. We spent a lot of time together, spent a lot of time together, particularly during COVID. Those were dark days and those of us in the EOC, Dennis would come over virtually every day, sometimes with Huxley to make us feel better. It's really been one of the pleasures of my life to work with you, Dennis, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
I would. So it's a a tradition in the George Costanza family to celebrate Festivus and then there's the Earring of Grievances. But we aren't going to do that now because it's not Festivus. I just really want to, I am so grateful for the career I had. And that started this is kind of tough. That started in this room in, in April Select Board meeting in 1986. And I can truly say that I never dreaded going to work. I always looked forward to it every single day. There definitely were times when the day didn't turn up the way I'd like. But I really enjoyed it and everybody in this town on the Select Board, the Finance Committee, all the different boards, the PBC, everybody, town meeting members. They're all enablers. And they enabled me, A, never to grow up and B, to have truly a very blessed and wonderful life. So I'm extremely grateful. I'm grateful for the support from the board, from FinCom's support in the town meeting members' support in the general public. I couldn't have asked for anything better if I if I could write the story. I could have written a better one than being able to be a part of it. There's no one left on the board from that day in April 1986. But they all were a big part of everything in that carries on today. Town in Needham is a wonderful place to work. And I echo Kate's sentiments that working with her was a great job. So I would, if you guys have an application for firefighter, I will fill it out now. Because I would start it all over again if I could. And it's just been, I don't know, I can't get the words to really say how great it's been. Not for anything I achieved, but for what I was a part of. And it was really something big. So thank you very much.
So we are grateful. Thank you. But you can now.
No, you have to do something for now. You have to give Dave my, Dave my purchasing time.
Resolution. I would note that we have a resolution. Are you? I have it. I have it. It's, okay. Marcus, do you want to read? Since you are, we have a certificate of appreciation, so.
All right. From the Town of Needham, Massachusetts Select Board, a word to Dennis X. Condon. In recognition of 36 years of service, the Needham Fire Department, culminating in eight years as fire chief, your legacy will be felt by members of the department, town, and residents for years to come. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, grant of location for Seven Star Ridge. We have Julian Counter from Eversource. To join us. All right, Ms. Counter, good evening and welcome. So the first grant of location is for Star Ridge. If you just want to briefly tell us about that one?
Sure. Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 14 feet of conduit into Central Avenue. And this is to relocate the underground service to Seven Star Ridge.
Okay. Is everything in order, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
All right. And so are there any questions from board members related to this? And is there anyone from the public here or online to speak or ask a question about this grant of location? If not, then I would welcome a motion that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 14 feet of conduit in Central Avenue.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor? I? Any opposed abstentions? It is approved unanimously. And the next grant of location. Mr. Pace, you are here, I believe, as the homeowner. If you want to just come and join us for this one. So this is a grant of location for 1607 Central Avenue. And again, Ms. Counter, if you can let us know what this one is?
Yes. So Eversource was seeking a grant of location to have 22, approximately 22 feet of conduit installed into Central Avenue. And this is to provide underground service to 1607 Central Avenue.
All right. And Ms. Fitzpatrick, the status of this one is?
The paperwork is in order. The work, a portion of the work has been done and that's why the developer is here.
Okay. You are a local builder.
I am, yes.
All right. But you haven't run into this situation before?
I've not. I've done about 10 homes in the last five years, but I've, though I've been a little overhead.
Okay. All right.
Don't know much about grant of location, especially when building in other towns. I haven't encountered this before.
Somewhere else. All right. So this is something that we do that I would have thought happened in other towns. What we find sometimes with these is that because of where the digging goes for a grant of location, sometimes it happens to be near the tree roots of a tree that's on the property immediately next door. So digging can be destructive to the roots or there's a conversation about what's the location of where it gets dug or how, how that's going. So we hold the, the grant of location hearing just so that people can understand what's happening. And so that if there is something that's of concern where it might be interrupting or problematic for a neighbor, that people have a chance to say something so we can work it out. Okay. So I would hope that you know that now as you go forward, because hopefully you'll do more underground ones as they go up to the house. It's a, it's a good thing to do. And people appreciate, I think, that occurring. Are there any other questions? And is there anyone from the public here on this? I'm seeing no hands. All right, then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chairwoman. I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 22 feet of conduit at Central Avenue.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
I won't be back for this reason.
We'll be delighted to see you for better reasons.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is an alcohol license hearing for New Garden. I'm looking, do I have that one printed out here? Thank you. So if I could ask the chief, Chief Schlittler, to come forward. We were expecting Raymond to be here. Christina, please come on up. All right. I hereby open this hearing, which is being held pursuant to general law, Chapter 138, Section 23 and 64, to consider whether New Garden, Inc., doing business as New Garden Restaurant, located at 40 Chestnut Place, Needham, violated 204 CMR 2.05 Prince II, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit, Chapter 138, Section 34, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under 21 years of age on April 6, 2022, and to consider the modification or suspension of the license. This alleged violation was discovered as a result of a compliance check and notice of this alleged sale and delivery was provided to the licensee on April 6, 2022, and again on June 22, 2022. So I need to confirm if the licensee is present and ask any representatives of the licensee to identify themselves. Do we need the licensee?
Technically, they don't.
They don't?
You don't need to be here.
They do not. All right. So Christina, I don't know if you need to state a name, full name and address for the record. If you could please provide a full name and address for the record.
Yeah, Christina Tyler, 35 Wilson Street, Birmingham, Mass. 01701.
Okay. To begin the hearing, I note for the record that the following documents are included as part of the record of this proceeding. The Notice of Violation, signed by Raymond So, dated April 6, 2022. The Police Report, reference 22 NEE-335-OF, Narrative for Patrol, Austin J. Broderick, dated April 6, 2022. The Hearing Notice, dated June 22, 2022, from Kate Fitzpatrick, Town Manager to the licensee. The Town of Needham Select Board's liquor license policies, and the list of prior compliance check violations and suspensions served. At this point, Chief, would you please provide us with some comments?
Sure.
And maybe a little bit of the history on this one as well.
Sure. Good evening. On April 6, 2022, the Needham Police Department conducted underage alcohol compliance checks of all the stores and restaurants that hold liquor licenses in the town of Needham. On that date, we sent an underage party into New Garden approximately 6:00 PM. The underage individual went up to the bar, went to the bartender, identified as Mr. Lee, and ordered a Bud Light. At that point, Mr. Lee did look at the underage identifi- license, which, as you've probably seen, is pretty clear in terms of stating that the individual with that license is under 21. It actually gives a date when that person is under 21 until. As the individual was served the beer she identified and called Lieutenant McGrath, indicating that she had been served an alcoholic beverage. Lieutenant McGrath came in and observed the alcohol that was served and then spoke with Mr. Lee, indicating that he had just served an underage individual. At that point, they were issued the notice of failing the compliance check. One of the things that concerned me a little bit that there was not a manager present at the time. And obviously, you know, there is a history of some underage sales at this location. And obviously, it's concerning because it's not the first time and that the license, although was checked, it's pretty clear regarding the age of that individual that ordered a beer.
Any further comments? Is that enough for now?
That's enough for now.
All right. Christina, do you have any comments to let us know either more about that evening or about? This is the second violation in the most recent two checks. So both of them have had issues.
Yes.
Can you talk about anything that the restaurant has done? Can you talk about anything that the restaurant has done?
Yes. So I mean, I think I genuinely think that Mr. Lee checked the ID and was looking for the date. From the moment that it happened to the moment we came to the last meeting, he was, at that point, ninety-nine percent certain that the ID read twenty twenty-one, which would have made her twenty-one. So he was kind of concerned, I think, also based on the situation that happened at the time, the way it was, the manner that it was treated in. He had asked to see the ID again before signing the paperwork, the police officer at the time wouldn't let him see the ID, he covered partial ID. So he was actually concerned about whether or not there was some inaccuracy in the identification. At this point, I understand, we saw the ID at the last meeting, it is what it is. But as far as something that we do on a regular basis, I wouldn't go as far as saying that this is something that happens all the time at New Garden. Yes, we've had an issue these last few times, time previously. I don't even think that there was an ID check, we've been working very hard in terms of making sure we check the IDs, we have a scanner, we're getting the scanner that you had suggested that we should be getting. All of, I've been working very hard to have my staff come in, get tip certified. We're, we are doing everything we can in terms of even not allowing some out-of-state IDs, having issues with customers being upset because we're not taking out-of-state IDs, or handling customer situations where they come in and they say, well, this is not fair, I have an ID, but you're with a table of all under twenty-one, we don't serve them. We genuinely try very, very hard, and you know, I genuinely think that Mr. Lee misread the ID. And you know, human error does happen, and you know, we've been trying very hard over the last few years. I know maybe in old times, history, there could be other issues maybe in the past. But all I can say is, my staff tries very hard in terms of making sure that we're not serving underage children.
When are you expecting to receive the scanner?
So I was looking into the information in terms of cost, there's multiple platforms that you can use, there's an actual scanner, or there's an app, and we're just kind of in the process of trying to figure out whether it's better to have an app so that more people have access to the app, or whether to have the gun scanner there, and in terms of which direction we're going.
Okay. I don't recall the date, though, that you came in and spoke with us.
May twentieth, I think.
May twentieth, all right, so it's a month afterwards, and we're still kind of in the investigation stage.
Right.
All right, this is a public hearing, because this is a violation of our liquor laws. So I will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, either here or on Zoom. And it doesn't look like I'm seeing any hands, so I will open it up to the board for any comments.
Yes. Thank you. I don't like that we're doing this and that we're here for these reasons, and we all got that out of the way. The only thing I'm having, one of the things I'm having a tough time with is that it's been a month or so, and it doesn't seem like there's been a lot of progress made. I know you said you're researching and trying to understand the things. But I, I was just, I think after our last meeting, we tried to make it very clear, this needs to be done sooner than later. And the due diligence behind it, it just doesn't seem like there was enough. I can't think of the right word right now. Enough sense of urgency to get this done, so we would make a decision, you know, in realizing that you're doing all that you can to push forward and to get the scanner, and to get everyone tip certified and all those things. So that's what I'm struggling with to understand right now, is why after a month, that hasn't been done yet.
I mean, I just, I've been doing the research, I've been relaying the information back to Ray, I think it's just a communication, push the button, and I do understand it has been a month.
Well, it's actually been since, I think, January was the last time we had this conversation, we talked about the scanner then as well, from the prior violation.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, so I didn't know that that was already a conversation that was brought up. So my apologies there, but yeah, so.
Not new, yeah. And can you talk a little bit more about the fact that there wasn't a manager on site that night? What is the scheduling with when a manager is on site?
Ray is there pretty frequently throughout the day, and typically, he is there in the evening, I am there four days a week. And you know, in terms of being tip certified, Hong is also there four days a week, then we have Wendy, who's also there. I don't know if there's an actual definition of the manager, are we referring to just someone who is tip certified that is able to handle a situation like this, or an actual physical person that we call a manager in the house? So like Hong, we might not say he's like a manager, but he pretty much manages most things in the bar. So he, I would consider him like a manager, so I know he might not refer to himself as a manager. I guess a definition for manager precisely is more, I guess, what are you kind of looking? Like, I, I would be a manager, Ray's a manager, we call ourselves managers, but.
Let me, let me turn to Miles and see if there is in fact an official definition of that.
A manager of record is a single person who is designated by the establishment that listed on the A B C C license. For this establishment, it is Raymond So is the manager of record. However, in practice, our restaurants or businesses choose to organize themselves in terms of supervision and staff, who may be tip certified. But manager of records must be trained for that higher standard, however, managers and assistant managers are also.
Okay.
So the legal on this is on a manager of record as.
Correct. And he's chosen not to be available tonight, so, okay. And you talked about the tip certification, what percent of the staff are now tip certified?
So Wendy, Nicole, Amanda. I would say fifty percent of the servers that would serve alcohol or certified, tip certified, that are here frequent, frequently enough. I mean, we're very light on staff. So if you're asking, it's, it's for the people that are there, most of them that are there all the time are tip certified.
Okay, and again, Christine, I understand that you apparently don't know, but that would have been another discussion back in January, would have been the need to have people be tip certified, so that they understood clearly what the requirements were for serving.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you. You know, it's very troubling having a third offense, and I understand, because I was there for the offense prior to this one, what happened. But I also understand on those licenses, it can be a little bit confusing on the dates, and I've looked at it on other places where the dates are not aligned. But the fact that they're vertical, right, is the first giveaway. And I guess the scanner discussion that I've had prior is that you can just get an app, and we were actually at a hearing, and I downloaded in two minutes, and I was able to use it in the back of a license, and that worked. So, you know, to see a movement towards doing that, I think, would be extremely beneficial. We, our hands are tied as far as the guidelines that we can do for a third offense, you probably know, three to five days. If you're looking at the fourth offense, you're looking at five to ten, and then it gets worse. So this really has to be it, because then I can see a ten-day, and then the plan has to be submitted, et cetera. Can you tell me tonight, and I know I wish Ray was here, but as far as that scanner or getting some type of equipment, how soon can you get that onboard? Whether it's an app or the physical scanner, can you do that within a week? Are you?
Sure, I mean, I've done enough research, it's just really about pressing the button, absolutely.
Okay. Is there, Miles, do we know, is there a way to suspend us, in other words, put a five, but if they show conditionally to have a three, if we were to look to do that? Do you know?
Not positive is the answer.
Okay. Okay.
The guidelines and the recommendation are guidelines.
Okay.
Guidelines.
Okay. You know, to me, it's different, if you didn't, if you didn't ask for the ID, you know, I'd be looking more for the five. Again, I'd be looking right now, tonight, for the three, which is the minimum. I guess the scanner issue troubles me. So if you can, you know, certify or authorize this board that you will have that in place, I'd be looking for the three, just with the understanding that the fourth is going to be a lot more difficult in front of this board.
Yeah, definitely, and I think the ID, the ID issue, and I don't know if this has come up, you know, officer, with the ID, I, I've, I've more recently have been looking at the IDs, and there's a slew of vertical IDs that are all twenty-one plus. So I, as much as I do agree, the vertical ID should have thrown it off, he should have taken an extra look. But there is an abundance, because I, even after our conversation the last time, I'm like, let me start like extra looking at these vertical ones. And I've, I've seen a fair share that are legit, that are twenty-one plus, that, you know, I mean, sometimes I look at these kids, and I'm, there's no way they're twenty-one, you know, and it's just me, because I'm getting older. But, and I'm like, I look at them very carefully, and they're vertical, and they're twenty-one. And it's either because they lost their ID, and they had it replaced, and they were twenty-one, so the expiration date was a lot later. But it also, sometimes they get it right after they're right close to their twenty-first birthday, where it doesn't state. So I don't know what the one that came in looked like.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not here to debate the ID situation, I understand that mistakes can be made, but it's your responsibility to make sure, or the person on staff, to make sure that it is legit. And my point was that anything vertical or young would be automatically scanned. And I think what concerns this board is, once someone's, the first drink is horrible, but that's also a gateway into future drinks, because you don't get carded after every drink. So you could have a beer, then it could turn into another drink, a harder drink, a harder drink. So the responsibility is on the business owner, understand, but I was saying that I understand that, you know, it's different to me than if no card was asked for.
Right.
As wasn't in this situation. So I would suggest or implore that everything moving forward that's vertical be scanned, so there's no question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, any other comments? The board does need to, we, we could do motion one, which would just relate, first of all, the first step is to move the existence of a violation. I do believe that there is adequate data to indicate that there's existence of a violation, so let's do that first. I would move that the select board find sufficient evidence that on April sixth, twenty twenty-two, New Garden, Inc., doing business as New Garden Restaurant, violated two oh four C M R two dot oh five Prince two, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section thirty-four, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age. Is there a sec? In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor or in agreement?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so there is the existence of a violation. Once a violation is found, then we need to determine the, the policy and what the level of suspension is. Three to five days is the guidance that we're given. Probably similar to Matt, I had been thinking about three days, I am, I have to say deeply disturbed, though, about three things. I'm disturbed that Raymond has chosen not to be here, right? This is important, and it should be a priority for him. I am glad that you're here, Christina, but frankly, he is the manager of record, and he belongs here. Okay, the second is the fact that we still do not have the scanner in place, which is something we discussed in January and April, or May. And then the third thing is the fact that we're still working on trying to get people tip certified, which is another significant line of defense that you have in the restaurant. So I am quite concerned about those areas. Any other comments from other select board members, thoughts?
I just want to agree about the tips training. I mean, I think that the scanner is, is a, is a good backup, but the idea is that everyone is supposed to have adequate training, required training. So I understand that staffing is a legitimate issue, and but they need to be tip trained before they should be serving.
Madam Chair, and again, I don't know the legality of this, but could we continue this hearing until they provide scanner and evidence of tips training and have Raymond come in instead of making a decision tonight? Because I think that would help alleviate some of the concerns, or add to some of those concerns.
I don't know that I would want to continue the hearing without any suspension being imposed at all. I think the suspension process maybe needs to begin to think about what that looks like. But, but I do, I, I do think that I would be open to a motion like the one that you originally suggested, Matt. We weren't sure whether it's possible, but it seems within our guidelines that we could propose four days, that could be limited to three days with the imposition, or with the, the scanner being delivered and put into use. And I would also welcome further updates on the percent of staff that are tip certified.
I, I think, Madam Chair, that you could vote, if you're suggesting four, with one held in abeyance not to be implemented, if the scanner is produced at some period of time, I think that would be, those are, holding one in abeyance is legitimate. And then, may I ask, can we implement some kind of timeline for the rest of the tip training?
So with some period of time, so I don't know if we want to say within thirty days, what we would say.
Well, I guess that's a question, what is for tips training? And I don't, I'm not familiar with, I know there's a course you can take either online or in person.
So there is a requirement that the manager and the assistant manager have in-person training, which I believe they've satisfied, but there is an online course.
If the online course may be substituted for non-management employees.
Yeah. And it's available anytime, right?
It's a couple hours. Actually, I may, I think that the Board of Health has put it online on their website, which I recall from another hearing, to lead to the tips. Yes, so that employees can access the tips on the, the Health Department's page. I, I I have to refine that, but I know it's available.
Does that satisfy the requirement, just watching the, what they just put online, just like, is it?
The online training does satisfy the requirement. What we've heard from people is that the in-person training, we've heard from people who have done both, that they actually believe the in-person training is better with the ability to hear the questions that people ask, that it gets into more in-depth. But, but it would satisfy, particularly as you bring any new employees online, with at least getting them up to speed quickly to understand what the responsibilities are for serving.
So Madam Chair, we could have a condition, let's call it two weeks, where the staff could be tip certified. Christian, would that be reasonable in your, if it's an online course?
Yeah, yeah, the servers at least can do it online, they can do it at home.
Yes.
Then, yeah, that should be fine.
And I would suggest that they pick the dates for the four or three suspended.
And are they consecutive days, like in a row, or could we do four or three?
So they are not consecutive dates, but, so you have the ability to choose where the dates are. I can tell you that if we see you again, it probably will be a condition of this board that they be consecutive, and that they run through a weekend.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I just want to comment on the consecutive days, I would say, what about if in the two weeks, these things aren't completed, then we do the four consecutive days? Can we do that, is that, or is just putting it out there? Is that something we can do instead of having them pick the days?
You could make that, yeah, you could have that as a condition, as another leverage point, sure.
Okay, so the intent right now is that, and I think what I've heard is that this is, select board was to suspend New Garden, Inc., doing business as New Garden Restaurant, Section twelve, in holder, all alcohol liquor license for a period of up to four days.
It would be four days.
Okay. With the days to be designated by the establishment, and the fourth day to be held in abeyance, pending the completion of tip certification by staff, and the institution of a scanner, piece of equipment or software.
And within the time.
And that, the, that that should be done within a two-week period from this evening. Okay. If that is completed within a two-week period, then it is a three-day suspension. This does say such suspension to be served on consecutive days, but I thought I had understood that that was not a requirement, that the establishment. Okay, so if it's not completed within, the four days must be consecutive into a weekend. If it is completed, then it's three days selected at the establishment's choice. If it is completed, then it's three days selected at the establishment's choice.
Right.
Does that within two weeks from now?
July, July 13.
12.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Christina, I thank you for coming.
There's one more motion, Madam Chair.
So lastly, is the authorization of notice if you want to make that motion?
Yes, move that select board authorize the town manager to draft and send notice to select force decision to license of the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. So thank you. Thank you for uh, working on this and getting it brought together over the next couple of weeks. And we certainly are not hoping to see you again at the next check, which is probably coming sooner than any of us know. So, all right.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night. All right. We'll close the hearing. Thank you, too.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. The next item that we have on our agenda. Oh, we need to wait a moment, right? It is a public hearing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could uh, move the consent uh, and the appointment, and then I'd like to just have a brief discussion. But second.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to to point out a couple of things in the consent for those at home. And now that we have a little time before our um, public hearing. First of all, um, we have the chief in tonight and in our consent um, is to approve the town manager's appointment of Thomas M. Conroy as fire chief. Um, I know that in an upcoming meeting, he will be sworn in. Um, it'll be great to see him and look forward to a uh, successful career uh, in the town of Needham. So looking forward to that day, uh, which is, I think, the next meeting coming up.
Correct.
Okay. And then second, um, the grants given out um, of a total grant request for round two, 127,500 to small businesses throughout Needham as well as our change, which was for nonprofits who are listed. So uh, definitely a successful round uh, as far as the applicants in the town are concerned to get these people, to get these businesses in nonprofits uh, back up and running. Um, and then it also says in the description how it's used and some for equipment upgrade and of course COVID protection and rent and and things that were lost during COVID. So I just wanted to point those uh, two things out, Madam Chair. And I almost hit the mark, but uh, I guess we'll have to talk about something else.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. On that, um, I don't think we have time.
We want to note all the appointments that Marcus and Miles worked so hard on getting some really great qualified people to step up.
Appointments are processed and and you're not quite finished, right?
No, not.
No. It takes a while. So um, every year, the board is grateful to the vice chair and also now to Miles for um, for uh, and Zoom has greatly helped, I think, with that process. So the process gets better and better, but we are grateful um, to you two for doing your work and to people in the town for stepping forward and volunteering to work on boards and committees. Very important.
Agreed.
All right. Um. Do you mind if we do the uh, Hutter Ridge Road? Can we do that? Is there any reason why we can't?
Tom's off here.
Do we, do we need him to be here? I mean, um, we we've met with him already twice on this. It does not indicate to me that it's a public hearing at this point, right? We've had that.
He's bringing something for you to sign, but it's fine. It's, yeah, it's the signature package already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So people will recall, this is the third uh, time we've discussed Ridge Road. This is the formal um, taking of that road as a townway. It was a private way and it's now um, becoming a a townway and will be pub by the town and things like that. Um, all the neighbors have certainly agreed. We've had a public hearing to see if there were any issues. Um, but if the board is um, ready, then I would welcome a motion or any further discussion on that.
Madam Chair, move that the board vote to approve and sign the order of taking for townway Form 3 for Hutter Ridge Road.
Second then.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hutter Ridge Road is a town road. So we can sign that. Um, I think we are officially, oh, I don't have it officially, it looks like.
Fifty-four seconds.
Fifty-four seconds. We're getting there. We're getting there. All right. Kitty, do you want to come up and be ready to talk?
Walk more slowly.
How was your day?
Hello, everyone.
I don't know if you have anything that you're using for presentation materials for us now or?
Um, in your packet, there is an updated red line and updated uh, license chart and an FAQ.
Okay. And we had um, a comment, we've, we've actually had a number of comments, I think, come in. We had one comment come in that was asking a question. I believe the net of that question is really a zoning question as opposed to our regulations, which will apply once the applicable zone is actually set. So just to confirm that, but um, yeah, it looks like we might have 6:45. It is officially that time, so we can open the public hearing on the proposed alcohol regulations and changes. This board has had a conversation about this already. It's also been discussed at the planning board and um, when it came up at the planning board earlier before town meeting this year, it was clear that people wish to have an understanding of what the regulations might be for a micro brewery to be operating in town. And so we've now pulled the zoning and are trying to get the zoning and the regulations to match up. So Katie, let me turn it to you.
Great. Thank you, um, Chair Cooley. Um, I just have a few things to highlight. We did make updates to the red line policy change based on the feedback that you gave us at your last meeting. They're all in section 10. Um, we removed any uh, specific requirements about how this floor space of a farmer series pouring permit. Those are likely micro breweries. So we're silent on that. I will say just so for clarity, um, it's section four, which applies to section 12s and farmer series. So anyone that's on-premise consumption licensee, they have to show you a floor plan. So you will see them in the application. You're just not preordaining of what it should look like. We uh, updated section 10.5, which is food service to say, um, again, this is specific to micro breweries, that food service uh, must be available to patrons at all times that alcohol is served for on-premise consumption. Um, and we listed all of the ways that they could get there. They could run a full, a full kitchen themselves. They could partner with a food truck or another restaurant. They could let patrons bring food in or any other arrangement that this uh, board deems appropriate. So it's, it's um, quite flexible, but um, adamant that food must be served or available. Um, we're silent on pitchers that aligns with what the policy had been before, which means they're allowed because they're not expressly prohibited. And that would apply um, for section 12s, so restaurants, brew pubs and for farmer series, which are micro breweries. Um, so those, those are the only red line changes. Um, at the last meeting, Mr. Barelli, you had asked a question about, um, it was more of a zoning question, but I wanted to answer it um, about the overlap between where brew pubs and where restaurants are allowed. So the planning board's um, current zoning amendment, everywhere that brew pubs would be allowed, restaurants are. So that overlap is 100%. But in the reverse, restaurants can be um, in the industrial zone and industrial one by special permit. And the planning board did not include brew pubs in those districts. My understanding from the planning director is that they're uh, taking another look at that.
Okay.
Cause they'll have to um, restart their amendment, zoning amendment process. Um, so it's still up for input. Um, and uh, as the chair mentioned, we opened it up for written comments. If you have not been sitting at your email all day, like I have, uh, 10 have come in, nine were supportive, one was a question that really was a zoning question. So I just want to note for the public um, that we're accepting written comment until July 15th at OTM@needhamma.gov.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes. Looks great. Thank you for all the work, because there's a ton. Um, question is on um, section, was it 4.6.7? Except for farmer series pouring permits, food service shall be available. But that seems to contradict what we're saying in 10 that you have to have food. Here's saying except for saying that they, it sounds like we're saying they don't need to have it.
So I want to check with Avria, our liquor license counsel um, on this. Because it may just be that we didn't update the language, um, but I just want to make sure food service shall be available.
Yeah.
In all areas.
Yeah, cause it should be in line with 10.5, right? Yeah.
I'll double check.
Yeah. And then um, the other question is, can you just explain like in what does retail look like in a micro brewery? Like you can drink on premise is retail. Retail sales at a counter. Correct. Any, any time at closing time? And it's just, it's basically a store, right?
Um, to buy to be able to drink off premise.
Yes.
And it, yes, it can be a separate checkout. Um, the thing I want to note, um, isn't about how it wor- looks, but the hours. Um, so because um, the ADCC for brew pubs and micro breweries set all the rules for how they make beer and how they sell for off-premise consumption.
Okay.
The state sets the hours for that retail sales for off-premise. So there may be situations where um, they don't align entirely with the hours that the select board sets for on-premise consumption.
That's fine.
Just want to flag that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right. And then um, another thought is, I think we had talked last time about saying there needs to be food available, like and you need, everyone needs a little ballast. And I kind of want to make sure we don't make it so loose that it's basically well as a brown bag policy, bring food if you want it. I want there to be food available. And we'd always said like, we don't how, we don't know the size of the kitchen. But I kind of don't want them to have, you know, table tent saying order from rub hub, please, if you want food.
Yeah.
And and then also it sort of ties into the whole issue of ghost or virtual kitchens. I don't care what they do with the menu, but I sort of, my eyebrows raised up thinking either they're going to do ghost or virtual with liquor takeout. And if they are, it had their name on it. Has to be on their license. Because that's sort of an issue with ghost or virtual kitchens that could that be an option?
Yeah, I'm going to answer your second question first because I think um, that ultimately the idea that it could be a ghost brewery.
Yeah.
Is that what you're suggesting?
In a way.
I think that would ultimately fall to the ADCC.
Okay.
Um, because they're really responsible for the off-premise sale. So on-premise. Trying to think. You're saying if they would sell somebody else's beer that they didn't?
No, they could sell their own under another name, their own under another virtual name or ghost name.
Right. I I think that that would be a a violation of their liquor license at the state level, but we can confirm that.
Okay, I'd like to be one of ours.
Yeah. So on the food, I'd say, you know, I think section 10.5 as written gives the board a lot of discretion on um, what the food plan looks like that's submitted by the applicant and if it is sufficient in your, in the board's eyes.
Right.
I think my only suggestion is we, we do have allowing patrons to have food delivered um, onsite as one of the potential options. We could carve that out so that it's so that an applicant does not suggest that they are only going to do that.
Yeah, I don't want to tell we're in the clear. We're, we're not serving anything, but.
So it is up to this board. This board will see a plan from the restaurant that we will need to approve.
Okay.
Or decide if it meets our requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a lot of discretion.
Thank you.
All right. I can see we have somebody from the public who has a hand up. I know at least one. If you can bring them over, please, Kristen. Thank you. Who is it who we have coming? Okay. He was just here. Hello, Tom. It's good to see you again.
Yeah, a long time no see. Yeah. Yeah, I just have a few statements. Thank you. Almost 10,000 breweries in the United States. There are over 130 in Massachusetts one can visit. New breweries are opening every day. I am an avid beer tourist. Whenever I travel, I try to take in a taproom or two. My total brewery is approaching uh, 200. As of last weekend, I've visited 62 of the breweries still operating in Massachusetts. I see breweries as a positive addition to a town. Over the past decades, I've been advocating to anyone who would listen of the advantages of a brew Needham. Of the 60 breweries I have visited, no two are alike. There are many models for breweries that have been successful. On March 28th, I zoomed into the planning board public hearing and expressed my pleasure that they were attempting to clarify the process for zoning. However, I did get a sense that the proposed zoning were more restrictive than necessary. There was an alcoholic beverage regulation concern, which is why the select board is having this hearing this evening. I hope that any zoning article that come before a town meeting be no more restrictive than is necessary to protect and serve the interests of all in town. I believe that the addition of section 1.8 farmer series pouring permit would offer anyone who wants to establish a brew pub or micro brewery the flexibility necessary. I have more to say and will email Katie by July 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I love your wall.
Yeah, that's, that's part of my beer. It's about it might be a can collection.
There you go. Quite a collection. Kristen, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this? I don't see any hands. All right. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak?
I don't.
I know, I thought maybe that's why John was here. So um, if there's not any other comments from the board?
Sure, Madam Chair. Um, thank you again, Katie, for putting this together um, and hearing our comments. I would like, and I agree with Mr. Harkins, I would like to see if there is a way to actually expand this maybe into those other zones and not have it, you know, as uh, restricted to certain areas. It's a lot, you know, if a business decides to go into a place and I I think the only caveat there is the food truck issue. So I wouldn't want something like this next to a retail establishment where, you know, they have an unfair advantage by getting food brought in. But I think if it's an area of town where it's not really accessible to food or they want to have their own kitchen, I think that's different. So I would like to look at those other zones. Um, as far as the food service comment, um, yeah, I think if it came to us and they say, yeah, we have a a popcorn machine in the corner or we have rub hub uh, on speed dial, I think that would be a different conversation. So I'm up to leaving it as open and flexible as we can. And then, you know, where the rubber hits the road when they come in. So thank you. Uh, thanks to Tom and those tuning in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? This is a matter that really is just for board discussion and for public input tonight. And as Katie notes, we're leaving that uh, a comment period open until July 15th. At that point, it will come back to the board um, for vote for the regulations. We would also expect to hear sometime soon, I think, from the planning board with their request that we refer the zoning to them so that they can start their process as well.
Great.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Okay, it is almost 7:00 PM.
Again, this hearing is a continuation and that was not was not noticed for a particular time. We just put it on its own. So it should be fine. Okay.
All right. So we can, um, do we have Diana and Jeremy here?
Did I? Did I have a script that I didn't print out for a dog hearing? Or am I just good?
You were going to go through the, the four items that were.
Yeah, I am. All right.
Yes.
So it looks like we have Diana. One second. Here's the set of things that I asked for.
One second. Here's the set of things that I asked for. All right. We are here this evening again for the continuation of the hearing. Actually, this doesn't have Chris's letter. I did mean to print and it looks such I didn't. Here we go. For the continuation of the hearing of Axel from Ms. Razul Aga at 233 West Street. And I do want to note that this was a hearing that actually the board started on January 11th with a hearing related to Axel and Maya. And then this hearing was begun on April 13th after yet another incident. So we have four areas, Ms. Razul, that I think we'll check in on. It's my understanding that you have applied for insurance and I don't have your letter in front of me. So my apology about that. I think that you sent us a note for some five insurance companies that you have applied to and all of them have in fact denied coverage of those five. Can you tell us who else you're still looking at? I understand that coverage is denied because of the bite history that Axel already has.
Yeah, so initially Attorney Cohen gave me three insurances. And when I contacted them, they always referred me to the websites and to do the quotes and whenever I put like, they have like three or more bites. So whenever I put it, I get the email and I included screenshots also for the rejection. So after that, I called them and I asked them, was that the reason? And they said, because usually when there is like more like a bike history, they don't take cases, but you can try X insurances and they recommended also Insureify. So I called them personally. I didn't go to the website. And I talked to them and they said just the same thing because of that, they can't take it. So I started looking, to be honest, I've been looking on internet and all what I'm getting are those more like the, those are the big insurance companies that I'm finding on online. The rest, like everything, you know, like comes up, it turns to be health insurance. So I'm a little lost here. I don't know where to where to look for. Because if I, the keyword that I'm putting, you know, like K9 liability insurance, and those are the companies that I'm getting. The E on the X insurance, the canine, insure my canine. Those are the basically big ones here.
Okay.
So.
So Ms. Razul, I don't know yet, given this information that just came in late last week, if there are any other alternatives that the board has that are available to us. We would certainly ask that you continue to look and that you ask Attorney Cohen if he has anything else for other ideas. Ms. Frau?
One of the text messages that's pictured here from K9 actually at the bottom says, we appreciate this opportunity and can reconsider the policy once the canine is fixed. So it's possible that once the dog is neutered.
Maybe we.
I don't know.
All right. So let's move to the discussion of neutering. We did ask that Axel be neutered. That was a request that we made back in April. When we started down this road and I understand that you now have scheduled the neutering, but it is scheduled for October. Can you tell us why it's taking so long?
Yeah. So there are two factors here. The one factor, when I spoke to Dr. Fish on his problem with his undescended testicle. And so he mentioned that he like the best, the discussion was about the best time for him to be neutered. And he mentioned usually for females, it's better after her first heat and for males, it's better, you know, like within a year and a half to two years. So we decided to take the earliest, which is a year and a half, and it's going to be, it's going to be in October. And that's how also we scheduled according to his schedule also. His schedule is pretty tough. I, as you see, you know, like I wasn't able to get to get in with him. So the other factor is also they gave me estimation for $6,000 for the surgery, which is, which is really big number for me. So I'm looking for, I'm sure that there are other good doctors around that they can do it for cheaper. And I'm looking for that. I found actually one of my friends, she she used to have her dog, she her dog had cancer multiple times. She had a lot of surgeries with her and she recommended she recommended Middlesex Animal Hospital in Belenica. She said they're great and she was able to afford their prices. So I just got her text yesterday, so I will check those. And she said also there is a hospital in Wolfham that they also very good. So I'm checking, you know, like all the possible prices. Because I remember, you know, like when Maya was fixing, it was like a total surgery, like very invasive and it caused me about 12, 1300. It was four years ago. So $6,000 is is a lot of money. So hopefully we can, I can find, you know, a doctor who can do it earlier and cheaper.
Okay. All right. So that at least answers the question for us about why. The behavioral analysis, again, something that we've been asking about since April. We'd been waiting for an appointment and appointment was to take place, I think, on the 20th, if I'm remembering the correct day. And that the 23rd and that did not happen as I understand it because of some misunderstanding. Can you let us know what the status is of that?
Yeah, I was very looking forward for it as well. And what happened is that I don't know, maybe it was my fault or the way the communication was going. So I thought the whole evaluation will be $400. And it turned out to be it's $1,200. So I was shocked, to be honest, for that. And I started looking around for for the certification that are needed to be that. And I found out that there are two certifications that needed to be for people who are like Bernie Cohen said, they have to be certified to be behaviorist. So, so Dr. Terry Bright was had one of those certifications and I found another behaviorist who carry it's it's called Certified Behavior Consult K9. And it's accredited by Certification Council of Professional Dog Behaviorists. And she is actually, I found, I looked online and I found Karen Plagio. And she is five miles from here. And I looked at her website and her website mentioned that she does behavioral consultation and she issues written report that summarizes her observation, assessment, recommendations for managing and resolving the dog challenging and opportunities for environmental modification and enrichments and additional resources. And her consultation is for $220. And that will be, you know, like followed by her recommendation that I will have to do after, you know, like she writes her report. So I'm looking for a couple of, you know, like other people and they have way more reasonable prices for, you know, like same certification, same qualifications. So I'm considering those if the town is okay with that.
Okay. So, so again, this is something that we've been asking for since April. I'm glad to see that you're identifying potentially some sources. We are more than two months after we started down this path and we had hoped to have it onboard by two weeks after we we had this first conversation. It is important to us that we understand what this evaluation is. I would think it would be important to you to understand that you have a neighborhood that is traumatized by your dog at this point. And so we'll need to, we'll need to come back to that. The fourth item that we had on our list related to your front door and the gate that was installed there. So you sent us a picture of the gate. My question is this, we asked for the, we actually asked for the yard to be fenced. And I understand that the phrase yard to be fenced was not apparently clear sufficiently clear enough. So your backyard is now fenced, but the front yard is not fenced. We had asked about the front yard, invisible fencing, other fencing. I had been told that was too much. The gate was put on the front door. I know that when I drove by the house this morning, the gate was open. And when I drove by the house this afternoon, the gate was still open. So the gate was not used all day today. It's my understanding from some of the neighbors that that's frequently the case that the the gate is in fact open. I don't know how secure I'm feeling with the gate right now. Would you please talk to us about the gate?
So I saw, I came back home and I and the gate was open. Yes. And my dad was sitting outside and he went inside for a second and came back. And he didn't close it. So I told him to whenever, you know, like even if it was for a few seconds, just to please close it. So but the door again, it's it's self hinge like strongly if if it was open and someone just left it, it just slams strongly. And and the gate is most of the time I make sure it's closed. It was just my dad thinks, you know, like if he gets inside and outside for a second and he just, you know, like he doesn't, and I'm sorry about that. And I told him, I, because I see, I saw that when I came in today. And I told him about it.
Okay. So, so it was open all day today, but I understand that that's actually a fairly common occurrence. That it will be open for extended periods of time. So it's not doing the job that we would have expected.
Right. I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure because I'm mostly at home now and I close it myself. And when I come home from work, it's it's closed. I don't know. I have no answer for that.
Ms. Razul, I have one other question that's come to us from the neighbors. Which is apparently there have been sometimes recently when the garage door has been open. All right. You do have a door from the house to the garage. And again, there was concern expressed by the neighbors about that door as well, given that the garage door was open. Can you talk about what the setup is for that?
So the garage, the garage, again, I don't know it because we always close the garage. I'm afraid of also like things coming in through the garage. So I'm also, you know, like I always close it myself because I'm the only one who uses the garage, the car, my dad also as well. And he left it once also, you know, like he left it open. So I also told him to close it and not open it. So after that, I haven't seen it open. The other thing I make sure also that I have the, so I have a door, garage door that goes to the kitchen. And I'm going to show you also, I put another gate inside the house. I'm going to show you now. Know how to to flip it. So but this is also my kitchen. And this is the garage door. And this is another gate here to prevent the dogs from getting into into that area. And the dogs have been really good, you know, like once they see anything, you know, like in front of them, they just stop and they don't even try to cross it.
All right. Any comments or questions from the rest of the board?
I think what's been extremely tough with this and for how long it's lasted for is every time that it seems like we ask you to do something, there's something else that comes up that takes away from you getting that done or something that your father may have done or something that someone else may have done, whether it's fees or things like that. And it's such a pattern now where it's getting really, really tough to hold it together and and really understand all of this. And when it comes to patience, I feel like we have been extremely patient and doing our absolute best to try to meet you where you at, where you're at. And it seems like at every turn there's a new problem or a new situation that we just can't figure out and things getting pushed back longer and longer. And it's really frustrating because it feels like even if it's not intentional, the impact the intention is for you to get these things done. But what we see is that someone is what I'm speaking for myself right now. Someone who is not doing all the necessary steps to make sure that this will never be a problem again. And there have been some things done and I credit you for that. But it seems like there's been so many other things and other situations that have come up and it's really, really frustrating because we are trying to meet you where you're at in so many different ways and things keep going and going and going. And I feel like I'm I'm, I'm all done with trying to meet you where you're at because it seems like it feels like you're not meeting us where we're at and what we're trying to do for you. But what we're really trying to do for your neighborhood and we're trying to do for the people that your dog has terrified and that the things that have happened are just extremely disappointing for my end. And every time I listen to you speak, it's really tough to really listen with an empathetic ear because it just seems continuously that we are just not being taken serious or in the manner that makes sense for the things that have caused your neighborhood so much harm and so much and so much cause for cause. So I don't know what else to say. I, I wish I had more good to say and I try to always lead with goodness and I'm just at my breaking point with this because it has gone on for far too long and there's been way too many excuses. And I just it's not right. And that's all I have.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah. Thank you. You know, dogs are expensive and having a dangerous dog is extremely expensive. And we're trying to fix this and protect the neighborhood and you're price shopping. And that's absolutely inappropriate that we asked you to do, meet with the dog behaviorist and he scuttled the meeting because you were losing. The price was too high. This is that's, I'm sorry, that's just too bad. But now we're also looking for another vet who can do surgery, who's cheaper. Your dog has a medical condition that's infecting its hell. And you have to get on it. And I think we're seeing a pattern of you going cheap and avoiding doing any of this. And this is, it's super frustrating. I would suggest we either make a motion or do something to have legal next steps for the next meeting. Because I think we're sort of undone. I think we've, we've done this as much as we can. I think you're overthinking so much of it on the homeowner's insurance is a simple request to provide your homeowner's insurance to the chief of police. That's your insurance tied to your mortgage.
But her homeowner's insurance specifically excluded this. That's what's gotten us to the rest of it.
Then you got a problem.
Right.
So I think now you have a place that you can't have a dog. And I think you're starting to answer the question that we asked in the first meeting was why are you having this dog and should it be euthanized in fact? But I think you're seeing that the price and the possibility of keeping a dangerous dog in your house is prohibitive. And I think you have to come to realization that this dog needs to be rehomed. Thanks.
We can't. Well, we can't order.
But she can.
She could always make that decision. Any other comment?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I echo the comments that I heard this evening. You know, there's a difference between being reasonable and then being taken advantage of, you know, kindness and weakness, so to speak. And we've tried to be kind here. But you get to a certain point when I saw this list and I went in with the open mind of saying, okay, insurance. Let's see what we can do about that. But then neutering, you know, when you talk about the cost, as Mr. Keen was saying, that's not our issue. That's an issue that you chose to incur because you're choosing to have the That's not our issue. Uh, that's an issue that you chose to incur because you're choosing to have this dog. And I saw the October seventeenth date. I said, okay, well, maybe we have something there. But now I hear that might not be the date, because you might find someone else. Uh, who is cheaper. Same with the behavioral analysis, fees, misunderstanding. Um, you know, when I read that, it was different than saying, okay, this person's too high. Again, I was mentioned before that it's going to be the cost of doing business. And lastly, the front gate, um, even with the dog door, I don't understand why there's a dog door in there. Maybe it's for the other dog, but. That's, that's a point of, you know, weakness there. And I I really thought, when you talked about, you know, a double gate, that would be another safety gate. Uh, but if something pushes that, or as I heard tonight, leaves it open, uh, that just defeats the point. So. Um, you know, if we want to talk about uh at another meeting or giving a deadline, otherwise talk about a euthanasia vote. I'm not saying we'll be on that boat, but I would be open to having a a a deadline, um, and then take a vote up or down on euthanasia. Thank you, Madam.
A lot of deadlines.
May I?
Okay.
Yes, it's real. I just want to say, I I think that um Ms. Razul has done like. An extraordinary amount to try and complete this list. I. I do want to remind her, though, that at the very meeting where we set out these conditions, I myself expressed. Consternation that this was going to be a very tall order, that this was going to be very expensive. And I was very concerned that, you know, very few people have the resources to handle. The extent of the conditions that we laid out, but that this was a all or nothing kind of deal. That the neighborhood is very afraid and that in order to save the life of her dog, that these conditions needed to be met on a timely basis. And although I, I really appreciate. How much she's done. It is not the full order. And that was the condition. And so I I agree that I think it's time to move on and and think about what comes next.
Great.
Ms. Rizal, you're hearing um that this board is uh pretty well aligned at this point with our concern and our dismay. Um, despite the work that you have done uh with where we are and the amount that is still not done. Um, I'm going to add to that, that to say that one of the areas that I am frankly. Uh, most deeply saddened is that there has been absolutely no apology. To any of your neighbors about the harm caused to them. Uh, that just staggers me at this point, that you've not had any outreach, that even people who, I understand you wrote a check. But not even to include with that check and note that said, I am really sorry, just blows me away. I I gotta be honest. Um, this is not a good situation. It it's not a good situation for you and your neighbors. And your neighborhood is really tired and traumatized. So, um, at this point. We will continue this to our next meeting. All right, that meeting is a meeting where I expect that unless everything is resolved at that point in time, that we will be taking up a discussion. About a euthanasia order, which I know is not where this board ever hoped to be. Um, that's a very difficult thing. None of us want to be in the position of having to make that decision for somebody. Okay. I thank you for your continued efforts and I hope that uh. You can find some, some alternative. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you have any other advice for us at this point?
Only another motion to continue to July.
So I do need a motion to continue to July twenty sixth.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I I.
Mr. Nelson.
This, we didn't want to get to this point to have this discussion and to continue, continue this another time, but it's. It's something that is really more of a look in the mirror on your end, because we didn't get us to this point. You know, we tried to do this, you know, as soon and as diligent and put all these parameters in place to get this done. And it hasn't been done. So this is not something that, if anything were to happen next, that. It should be one of those things where you look at us and say that we failed you, uh, because that's not the case. I think it's the complete opposite. And that's what makes this tough to say even out loud. I don't feel good saying this, but. We didn't do this to you. It's, it seems like this is something that you and the, and the lack of. Energy and. And motivation to complete the things that we asked, even though we knew it was a tall order, this is what. In a sense, you have brought us to. And and I hate saying that out loud, but it's, it's, this is kind of the end of the road with that. So I really hope that this is that. The last pillar of hope where everything that needs to get done will get done, will be scheduled with no interruptions. Because this is where we are now. Thank you.
Um, coming into the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, we will have a discussion at our next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Rizal. And um, I I do drive past your house on a regular basis on my commute. And I do take note of the door, so um. I I hope that it does stay gated. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is the town manager report. Actually, did Tom come in and go out? Did I miss him going out? Okay, thank you to Tom for coming. And um, I'm, I'm glad that we've already accomplished that action item. All right. Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Just a few things.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to to talk to you, maybe something that people don't know that our office does, but we process passports out of our office, which is kind of a. I don't do them myself. Miles and Kristen and Louise, Louise in particular does, um, the vast majority of them. Um, but Kristen and Miles do them. And um, they're quite joyful, because most people coming in. Um, you know, it's complicated. If you have kids, you have to have the parents with the kids and it it's very complicated. And so we often have. Three to five people uh standing up. But we run in the, you know, in the old days, we would run two hundred a year. And during COVID, um, we ran a hundred and seventy-five. For the, this fiscal year through this week, we've done three hundred and sixty passports. And that's just so much effort, but it's also so much, you know, such a benefit for for the residents. They um, they love coming here instead of the other place that's down the street that our government runs. And um, you know, just uh, it, the staff just does an amazing job with them, because they're often complicated too, because I just listen and it's like, wow. It's very hard to get a, a two-month-old to sit up and. And not have blankets in the picture, which evidently is a problem, so. So there's always a story at the end of the day of, you know, where someone's going or, and and Louise always has such a great way with people and. What, when you see a five-year-old swearing himself in, it's just, it's just wonderful. So it's just an amazing amount of work. So I thought you'd want to know that, because I was shocked. I mean, it's. Um, more than a hundred more than we've ever done before in a year. I know, if you need a passport, we're very reasonable. Um, tomorrow, four o'clock, the public safety buildings are being dedicated. We're public's welcome. We'd love to see people there.
Isn't it Thursday?
Thursday. I'm rushing the week. Thank you. It's Thursday for um, four o'clock at Station Two, which is in Heights, and five o'clock down the, down the street. So we we'd love to see people there. And then, of course, this weekend, um, the July third and fourth festivities with the fireworks on the third. This is the time of year when we get a lot of calls, people asking when dusk is. Um, and.
Later than you think.
Later than you think.
Yeah.
It usually has a nine and then if I'm mistaken. And then um, the Fourth of July, obviously, the fire. And, you know, the pool has opened to rave reviews. We, we were down there today. Um, it looks fantastic. It's, and the weather is, the weather is cooperating with the pool. So that's a short snapshot of where we are.
Oh, that is good. Thank you. Any other questions? I I did read um that uh with the continued drought, there, there continues to be questions about watering and things like that. So we are not at this point restricting watering. We'll let people know that, but uh we'll continue to watch what happens with rainfall.
Yeah.
So. All right, um, the next item on our agenda is committee reports. Marcus, do you want to talk about Nwari or do you want me to start?
I'll, I'll beat up you.
Okay, so, so I will say that the Nwari committee met, uh, we were thinking for the last time this year, and we had a discussion, in fact, about the future of Nwari. Um, we uh, Nwari was originally um. Charged to be a temporary one-year committee and then extended to be a two-year committee. Um, after discussing with the committee where we are and we've accomplished, I didn't bring my list with me, but we have accomplished a huge number of tasks. Uh, for the town, including setting a vision for racial equity for the town of Needham. Um, and starting to do work with a variety of boards of committees about how they incorporate that work into their agendas and think about it. Um, lots of work, as you all know, with our police, um, in terms of understanding and thinking about their work and how um that feeds. Um, that feeling for people in town so that we could meet our goal of everyone who's in Needham feeling welcome to be in Needham. Um, but after meeting with the Nwari group again and talking about where we would go forward. Um, the discussion was that the group will continue to stay constituted, that they will plan to meet once annually. Probably in the late March timeframe before annual town meeting. With a goal of reviewing the work that the town has undertaken over the last year in the boards and committees. And being able to make a report to town meeting about the status and the progress on that work. Um, that we thought that that would be a good use of their time and a good focus for that group to continue. Um, and our term, thanks to Marcus, is Avengers Assemble. And we'll put up the call and everybody will appear.
Yeah.
Um, so we look forward to that. But the group has, I think, really enjoyed working together. And as we continue to say, it is the most diverse group in Needham. And uh, getting to know each other. So we did enjoy our meeting and we did set a course for how we see going forward.
Absolutely. I would say as far as the group working together over the last two years has been so beneficial to our town. And just as us, as individuals that are, you know, volunteering to be a part of that working group. And the hard work that Kate, Katie, Sydney, and everybody that have done and Miles to get us kind of where we are. And making, you know, that diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging a part of the fabric of Needham, you know, not what we do, but who we are. And I think when we get to a point, when we get to that point, then we we know that this is um. Where we want to be as a town aspirationally. And we are doing our best to not just check boxes, but to really do this work. And and make this, you know, very influential and make it a a destination from people from all different backgrounds and cultures and. You know, identities and all those things to feel like Needham is a place where I. Want to have my family in a place where we are celebrated for our differences. And not trying to conform to how things are or how they've always been. So being a part of this group. Um, has been definitely a pleasure. It has been. Um, we've definitely had a lot of intense conversations and discussions, but it's always been treated as such, with such respect. And, you know, empathy for different opinions. And I feel like. Um, as cheesy as it sounds, but like leading with love, I feel like we did that in every meeting, no matter what the outcome was. Um, we came back to how appreciative we are for each and every person that's been involved in this. And then going forward with the, the boards and committees that have adopted this. And the accountability piece that's going to come forward through this. I think. This has definitely been a win for Needham. And it's a, you know, a working document. So we're going to continue to update and push it forward and. All these different ways. But the fact that this is happening in this town is just a positive in itself. And I I just can't wait to see how it blossoms and. How we benefit as a town because of that lens that we are adding to the the town and the fabric and of who we are.
Great, thank you. I um. One of my emails that I get regularly is from the Ripon Society. And and it includes a a category once a week called the Teddy Tweet from Teddy Roosevelt. And there was one today that spoke to me and spoke to this matter and spoke to what I talked about at the beginning of our meeting as well. Which says, neither our national nor our local civic life can be what it should be. Unless it is marked by the fellow feeling, the mutual kindness, the mutual respect, the sense of common duties and common interests. And I would hope that that always guides the work of this board and this town. And so I thank all of you in joining me on that journey and that work.
Thank you, ma'am. All of your work with us.
All right. Any other boards, committees that met recently? If not, then um I would welcome a motion to go into executive session for exceptions two and three. And somebody add that motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session under exception three to discuss strategy. With respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And the chair does declare.
And under exception two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, not to return to open session prior to adjournment.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Fraun?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are adjourned from public session.
Thank you.